I'm going to call this meeting the Gloucester School Committee to order. I'll remind everybody that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engaged, lifelong learners. This meeting is recorded by video and audio in accordance with the state open meeting law, consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning gatherings of more than 25 people. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. There will be no public input at this point. We will be meeting again tonight at 7:00, where there will be oral communications. So Maria, could we have a roll call, vote for attendance?
Ms. Prince.
Here.
Mayor taken. Mayor taken. I'll come back to her. I see her name there.
Yeah, she's on, exactly.
Ms. Watson.
Here.
Ms. Weason.
Here.
Kathy Clancy.
Here.
Mr. Favazza.
Here.
Chairman Pope.
Here.
Mayor taken. Are you there? Oh, should I note that she's here?
Well, your computer's here, anyway.
Okay.
She might be doing something else, too. She's usually on three Zoom meetings at once.
Yeah, she's probably here in some aspect. So I'd like to begin this meeting by thanking Mike Hale and Joe Lucido and the representatives from Siemens to make their time available to give us an update on the work that they're doing at all of our schools and what the work they intend to do in the future. I would like this meeting to focus on those aspects of the safety of the buildings. And for those, I sent out a memo this morning to the school committee members saying, we're going to, for equity, we're going to limit people to one question at a time. And we'll go around, and when everybody's had a chance to ask their question, we'll come back around, time permitting. There are time limits on this meeting because the DPW has graciously allowed us to infringe on some of their time, but they've got a lot to do. And they're working very, very hard trying to keep everybody safe. So without further ado, Ben, did you have anything you wanted to say before we hand it over to Mike? Okay, well, Mike, thank you. And you can give us your report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I'm Mike Hale, Public Works Director. On my right is Joe Lucido, Assistant Public Works Director. On my left is Brad Poole, who is our HVAC technician. All three of us are available to answer questions as they come up. We also have on the phone with us Brendan Leary from Siemens. Brendan and Brad both have to be out on site at 11:00, so we're going to try to get their piece taken care of early in this, so we can get them out because they're working on schools today. So I was hoping that we could start with Brendan. And Brendan can give an overview, just for time purposes, on who Siemens is and what they're doing relative to their contract with the city for the opening of schools for 2020. Brendan?
Thank you, Mike. I just want to first confirm, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, awesome. So yeah, thank you, Mike, for the introduction again. My name's Brendan Leary. I work for Siemens. For anyone who doesn't know what Siemens is, we're a global infrastructure company, industry leader, myself particularly. I specialize in building performance. We've been working with the city of Gloucester for several years now, performing some energy reduction strategies and trying to improve the performance of all the schools throughout the city. Through all those projects, we've worked with National Grid and whatnot to basically network all of these buildings together and put them on one centralized control system so we can view and monitor all the HVAC equipment throughout the city. And that's happened throughout many, many years, along with those projects, including network. And we've been able to improve the control of all the HVAC equipment throughout the city and been able to kind of, you get visual on how the equipment is actually performing, including in that is being able to schedule equipment and control additional set points, fan speeds, outside air dampers, and all that jazz. So, Mike, do you want to give an overview of what we're kind of doing or how do you want to approach this?
Sure. So I think that's a fair way to start this. So this project obviously has an expedited expectation as far as when we're going to be able to get everything up and running. So Siemens is doing an evaluation of existing equipment, determining which functions well, what doesn't function as well as it possibly could, taking that list and making improvements to the equipment that needs improvements, whether it's a damper that needs to be replaced or coils that need to be replaced or motors that need to be replaced. And then the last stage of this will be to optimize, balance the system to make sure the air exchanges are sufficient in order to open up the schools. In addition to that, adding ionization units throughout the district to help further enhance the air quality within the classroom spaces and obviously some of the common areas as well. We can get into the specifics of what that is, but I think there's a lot of concern about the state of our equipment. There is no question that we have older schools with older equipment. That does not mean that it doesn't perform. What it does mean is when it does break, it's more difficult to replace, more difficult to find parts for, and it does pose some challenge on balancing as far as getting it to work efficiently with just a flip of a switch. A lot of the bigger schools have energy management systems that allow us to go to a centralized location and make a few tweaks to allow outside air exchange at a more steady rate. The older equipment doesn't work like that. It's more like manual. Do you guys hear any reverb or is it okay?
Yeah, we're hearing like a bit of a wave, waves crashing noise.
Oh, okay. All right. So, and there's been some discussion about poor air quality in the schools previous to the school year. We've had the schools maintenance since 2011. There's been a never reports run. I'm looking at a report from 2017 to East Gloucester, which is probably one of our older mechanical facilities, from carbon dioxide, carbon dioxide, temperature, relative humidity, all four basic air quality standards. They tested six classrooms and some base measurements in some surrounding areas, common areas and exterior areas, and everything was well within the parameters set by the Department of Public Health. And there are other guidelines through OSHA, American Society of Heating, Refrigeration and Air Conditioning Engineers, well within those parameters. I don't think we're going to have a difficult time meeting air quality standards. What the challenge is going to be is meeting some of the outside the box standards. You know, we want to exchange air in these buildings at a much more rapid rate or a more, a higher exchange. We need to undo some of the things that we've done over the years. And we've put these energy saving measures in place so equipment doesn't run 20 towards seven. We've... Sorry. Interruption. We get them all the time here. I apologize. So taking this equipment and making it so we can exchange air more readily is we've kind of backed away from that over the years, make these buildings more energy efficient. With the energy management systems, we can simply make a few tweaks to allow outside air to come in more frequently. In the smaller schools, we need to do it from a more mechanical perspective. And that's what we're focusing on right now. There's been a lot of discussion with filters. Much of our larger equipment has pre and post filters. Some of them are pre eight and post 13 and 14, MIR 13 and 14. It's important to recognize that in some of the older schools, the UNIVENTS, they can't support anything larger than an eight. The filter size, you can't create a larger slot to accommodate that. And you also, you have to stand the risk of burning out the motors in those filters. It's just the nature of what they are. What we are going through, we changed filters twice a year. We did it during February break and not recognizing that the pandemic was going to be what it was, we changed the filters shortly after school was vacated on the 13th of March and anticipating school to be back in session sometime in April. And then again, we replaced those filters in July and August of the summer in preparation for the opening of school. So we are going through building by building, technology by technology, system to system, making sure that they're functioning well, filters are changed, and they're optimized the best we can. And part of Siemens' work in the end with the balancing to make sure that we are getting the air exchanges that we can get out of the existing equipment. Brendan, you can kind of hit on that a little bit as far as balancing piece of this.
Yeah, so I'll just kind of touch on, I mean, you've touched on a lot of the scope. I'll just kind of walk through what exactly we're going to do and where we stand currently. So basically, the first step is repairing existing equipment. Siemens had some deficiency lists from past, from past energy projects that we had not gotten approval for, that we've already gotten the go ahead to start repairing some of these, some of this equipment. So materials ordered for those specific measures. We already have material on the way. For additional buildings that we did not have existing reports for, we have mechanics that are going to be going through all that, all of those pieces of equipment to identify inefficiencies. And we have the money to go through and repair those as well, once they're identified. So I believe they're on site this week doing that now. So this is an ongoing process to identify and repair all the deficient equipment in these buildings, in these schools. In addition to that, obviously, we have the ionization solution called O2 Prime Needle Point Ionization, which releases positive and negative ions into the airstream. And it reacts with bacteria and pathogens. There's been multiple studies with timeframes on the time it takes to neutralize these bacterias and pathogens. And we are implementing this on basically all of the equipment throughout these elementary schools that serve areas that will be occupied. Again, I mean, we have, we've also gone to the schools that we have the centralized control system in, and we've extended the operational timeframe of this equipment to provide additional outside air as well as additional circulation throughout the schools before and after it would be occupied. Again, that includes exhaust fans and all centralized equipment. Some of the localized controllers have local controllers, so that's going to be kind of, we have to rely on the teachers to make sure these fans are running at all times. Teachers can't go around and turn these fans off in their classrooms. They have to make sure these units are running. But just making sure these outside air dampers are open and supplying the required fresh air. And then one of the concerns that we're going to have, and that's one of the things that we're still addressing right now, is the outside air requirement. And then moving into, starting to move into and shift into the heating season is when we have these outside air dampers open, we have to be able to modulate these so we don't freeze coil. So that's another concern that we're, we're starting to identify now, and that's something we're trying to put together solutions to overcome as well.
Thanks, Brendan. So as we started taking a look at some of the needs that have been expressed to us for some sort of building users confidence to the opening, opening a school, windows that shall open and close properly, the ones that we know are broken should be fixed. There's no question about that. I'm not sure if I have a list of windows that are broken. I take a look at the work order ticketing system, and there are no existing windows on that need to be repaired. We have some schools that have fixed windows, so Mailer is one of them. And there are some windows that open, but the pheromone are fixed windows, and that's how that system is designed. We do clean air intakes regularly. What we can't prevent is them being obstructed. They are obstructed oftentimes by the, by the user of that room, whether it's on purpose or not, they're obstructed. It's a request from Public Works to principals annually. We see tapestries placed over UNIVENTS. We see them used as bookshelves. We see, they're used as stands for terrariums and turtle tanks and so forth. UNIVENTS are the air exchange and heaters in those rooms. They can't be obstructed. We can't control that. We can make recommendations that they do not put stuff on that. But it has been, again, since 2011, it's been an annual request of ours. West Parish is a new school, and it's been an annual request of ours for them not to be obstructed. They continue to be obstructed. Having outside, the air dampers open 100%, it's great in September and October. Once you start getting an eating season, it's not going to be possible. You will freeze coils. You will freeze the inhibits of that room. And it shouldn't be expected. There needs to be a percentage of fresh air brought into those classrooms and exchanged. But you can't possibly heat a full exchange in those rooms. Every exchange, it's just not, the rooms will be cold. And we have had UNIVENTS shut off in rooms because inhabitants of those rooms feel that the air is too cold blowing on them or too noisy. We had some recent requests for a couple of UNIVENTS that weren't working. They were shut off. They were working fine. Someone shut them off. It's difficult to manage that in the older schools because they've all learned how to shut them off. This was a question relative to, have we done air quality testing yet? We typically don't do air quality testing. We've never had an issue with it when we have done it. But due to this issue, we've, we've advanced. Siemens is going to do air quality testing as well as air balancing. That report will come out once we're finished with the work. But this week, we're beginning some independent air quality testing from another vendor who'll go in and measure basic parameters for air quality. We, you know, carbon dioxide, carbon dioxide, O2, humidity and temperature. Those are the basic five parameters that you will check. These classrooms aren't filled with students, so some of those numbers are not going to be as it would during a full school year. There's no way. I can't stick 25 Public Works employees in a room for the next week as we're testing air quality. It's not, it's not apples to apples, you know. 25 grown men is not the same thing as 25 students in that classroom. Maybe the high school would be, but certainly not the elementary schools. But it'll give us a baseline for how well the air is being exchanged in these classrooms. Any place that we can upgrade filters, we will upgrade filters. We have a filter order on, we have a filter order out there right now, and as they're coming in, they're being replaced, upgraded. They were already replaced in July and August with new filters, but we're taking a look at how we can make those improvements even greater. Again, as Brendan mentioned, we're looking at doing the ionization units in district wide, and hopefully that'll help alleviate some of the concerns of these classrooms. We do not have any intentions of installing portable HEPA filters. I think that's a reach. I don't think that's a viable option in these classrooms. I just don't think that's a wise move. If you're sitting three feet, six feet apart, HEPA filter in the corner of the classroom's not doing anything. I think I've expressed that during the first school committee meeting, that just installing HEPA filters, you should not give someone a sense that you need to, you could forego basic hygiene and protocol that we're all going to use during this pandemic. Your face covering, washing your hands, you know, not breathing on someone right next to you is these. You need to make sure you cover your face. Those are all personal hygiene habits that need to adhere to regardless of what technologies are employed in these, in these classrooms. You know, carbon dioxide testing. If air is being exchanged, carbon dioxide is unlikely to be elevated. I mean, it's going to be elevated as soon as the classrooms are occupied, but we have never come across elevated carbon dioxide levels in any of our testing in the past. And I don't particularly see it becoming an issue going forward either. I mean, obviously, the older schools are less energy efficient. They're drafty. Those schools should exchange air pretty regularly. The newer schools are more energy efficient, but have better equipment to exchange air on a pretty ready, steady basis. Are we going to get, you know, nine exchanges an hour? I don't think so. I don't think the equipment's set up for that. I don't think it was ever designed for that. But it'll be optimized to the best of the equipment's ability to exchange the air so the air is safe for all the people in the classroom. You know, bathrooms, nurse's office, I mean, those fans are continuously running. You can answer questions on that, but they are always running and they are exchanging air based on the size bathroom or nurse's suite that's there. And again, I think that some of the standards or the ranges that we're looking at, they're all over the board. You know, DPH has a standard on parts per million for CO2. It's far lower than what OSHA requires. OSHA has a 5,000 parts per million benchmark where DPH is an 800 parts per million benchmark. So in trying to, you know, fit all these, these air quality standards within some sort of measurable metric, you know, I'm not quite sure what the recommended benchmark is. So we're obviously, we're aiming for some of the lower benchmarks so we can assure people that we have the best air quality, best air exchange we can provide given the equipment in these classrooms. Cleaning protocols, all of our city custodians were given, we had a professional vendor come in, provide training for them on cleaning protocol. We are providing handwritten cleaning protocols in lodged each school that the custodians must follow. You know, cleaning will be supplemented through janitorial services to help with high touch, frequently used surfaces, handles, railing, so forth. We've installed, whether it's Public Works and or the school department, hand sanitizing stations throughout the district. We are ordering PPE for our custodians. We are ordering additional cleaning chemicals for our custodians. We are ordering additional hand sanitizer for common space areas. So I think going into the 2020 school year, I think we're about as prepared as we possibly can be. Honestly, I wish we were a little further ahead of this air quality initiative, but with guidance not issued until mid-August, it's a difficult task to beat some of these or give assurance that everything has been met on, you know, on Labor Day. We will get there. We will get there relatively quickly. We have boots on the ground today. Brad's working, you know, 40 hours a week on these buildings, and he's got to go ahead and take in more time if necessary. So we will make sure that as much of the equipment is functioning as well as it can now, replace it if it's broken, and then optimize the air exchanges of these classrooms, whether either software or manually, and provide ionization as the last step to making these classrooms even safer. So that's where we stand, Mr. Chairman. It's every single day. There's not a day that goes by that we're not working on this. And, you know, we're here to answer some of the questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Mike. And I appreciate the, all the work you're doing. And I think that, you know, everybody here does too. So let's just, we'll open it up for questions. As I said this morning, we're going to please refer one question, and then we'll move on to the next person so that there's equitable time for people to ask questions. So Kathy, go ahead.
I'll start with a simple one. The third party company you're bringing in, I'm just curious who they are. Not that I would have much knowledge about who they are, but I'm sure people will be curious what company that might be that's going to do that extra air quality testing.
We'll have the name right now.
You don't know who's doing it yet?
We're pulling up, we're pulling up the full name.
Oh, great.
The context's not important to you. The name of the company is important to you.
Yeah, great. Thank you. I, I think you blanked out for a second. I didn't hear your answer. Thanks.
So the company is Environmental Health and Engineering Incorporated. They are out of Newton, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
That begins tomorrow.
Okay, great. Anybody else have a question? Laura?
So I wanted to ask you, you did mention at the earlier school committee meeting, and you mentioned again today, that, you know, there's perhaps some misunderstandings around the UNIVENTS or in the past, those UNIVENTS were used as flat spaces. So, you know, what kind of training or what can we do to sort of make sure that every teacher, administrator, staff member knows not only what the UNIVENTS do, but what the sort of the ways to optimize air exchange in their classrooms and in their buildings are? Seems like that would be a good use of, of our time. So wondering if there are any trainings or any, any work being done with the administration on that.
So staff should not be trying to do anything other than keep them clear. And that's been made, I don't know how many times it's been said over the years. We will either mechanically or through technology adjust the cycles of these units if possible. But as far as using them as shelves or covering them because the air feels cool, that's, that's a function of the school community itself, and that's probably best handled by the principals. We can have a discussion with the principals again about the need to do this, and custodians can report this to the principal daily if they see them being covered. It's really important to understand that in an individual classroom, especially the older classrooms, that UNIVENT is the air exchange and heater for that room. If it does not function, all you have is windows. And, you know, opening a window is a great way to, you know, exchange air for sure, but it's not necessary. You can't really pinpoint how much is being exchanged every single day as you could with, you know, the UNIVENTS. So they must remain unobstructed at all times, period.
So just sorry, so beyond that, though, the UNIVENTS and also just sort of best practices regarding windows, fans, you know, so anything that our staff can know about how to improve the air exchanges in their classrooms seems like it would be valuable information, even beyond the UNIVENTS. So if that can be...
Again, I think leave how to optimize that up to, we can explain it to them if it's necessary. I think leaving it up to our techs to make sure that they are exchanging at an optimal level. And within a senior, if you want to open the window because it's a warm day, feel free to open the window. But leave it up to us to, I don't want people adjusting the UNIVENTS on their own. And again, that is historically a problem we have, that frequently shut off in all the schools that they can access the controls. And we see them, again, we started as recently as last week, whether it was shut off in March or they were shut off recently, but they were turned off again. And they're not broken. They're just turned off.
Melissa?
Thank you. While Siemens is still here, I wanted to ask this question. So we have staff making the claim that our buildings are unhealthy, unsafe, and that air quality is poor. It's difficult to convince those that have the concerns that everything is okay because we don't have any reports, written reports. And I understand that those are in the making and that they take time and that there's boots on the ground getting that information now. But I'm wondering, is there any preliminary information available, whether it just be on a spreadsheet or anything to show that we have done some testing and that buildings are, they are safe, you know, there's no reason to think that they're unhealthy or unsafe? Is there anything that you can provide us with before the start of school, which is less than a week away, or a week... Is there anything that you can provide us with before the start of school, which is less than a week away or a week away, to convince parents and the staff that our buildings are safe to go in and that the air that they breathe is healthy? Any documentation of anything? Because most communities that are negotiating with their staff to go in have these type of reports ahead of time and it looks like ours may not come until after the fact. So, I'm just wondering what preliminary information is available, if anything? Or what you could tell us orally about the air quality in the buildings that you documented?
Yeah, I would say, I would say we can refer to the equipment schedules showing that the runtime has been expanded and that the equipment is running be pre and post-school to help purge the system of air. I don't have any air quality assessments that are current. So, I would refer to the air quality assessment that would be performed before school as that report as we don't have anything current at the time.
Just.
Jonathan, may I ask Melissa a question? Those other districts providing air quality reports, are those occupied classrooms? Because if the schools are in summer recess, are they able to give just benchmark data?
Well, you know, that's a great question because most schools aren't starting until next Wednesday. I'm sure there's a few. But, I mean, I think we both know the answer is you can't really test the air quality until people are in the room.
You can test, you can test the air quality, it's just, it's just some of the matrix, some of the levels will change once your room's occupied. You know, that's room temperature because bodies and carbon dioxide levels will increase. I mean, there's no carbon dioxide to speak of in a room that's empty. I mean, there's some, but there's none relative to the limits. Carbon monoxide shouldn't be in any of the classrooms. And we don't have a fuel source burning in these classrooms to cause carbon monoxide. We have carbon monoxide detectors in the mechanical rooms that should pick up any hits on that. And humidity, you know, most of these schools don't have air conditioning, so humidity is going to be relative to the outside humidity. So, I do think starting tomorrow, we'll have some sort of benchmarks. It won't be in a full report, but it'll be preliminary numbers that'll show that our air exchanges are, you know, keeping up the rooms the way they're supposed to. When there's no air exchange, yeah, I suppose you could have a higher carbon monoxide, a carbon dioxide level in a classroom. So, we'll have some numbers going into next week for you, for sure.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
That'd be helpful.
Mike, I just think it might help right now if we, if we make the distinction between airflow and air quality. They are related, but they're two separately measurable things. Could you just elaborate that?
And I think, you know, Siemens will be providing us a balancing report which will talk about how much air exchange is occurring, is it optimized, where it can be improved? Air quality testing, again, you measure some basic metrics, carbon dioxide, carbon monoxide, maybe oxygen saturation, temperature, and humidity. Those are the basic parameters we do for air quality. And again, I think air quality is a pretty big term. Are we checking for, some things you just wouldn't check for. And it's probably a longer list of things you wouldn't check for than you do check for. But it's basic environmental conference. How well, you know, we breathe in the classroom relative to how much oxygen is in there, which is air exchange, how much carbon dioxide remains in the room when the room is occupied. And then temperature, obviously, you can't work, you know, the temperature ranges between 68 and 80. Some people say that's a huge range. It is a big range, 68 to 80. 80 is much more, is uncomfortable for me. I prefer 68. Humidity, they want somewhere around, you know, 65%. It's going to be less in the wintertime, obviously. And then, you know, carbon dioxide levels, that's a, that metric is up and down depending on what standard you're looking at. We're using DPH at 800 parts per million. And the balancing will determine what that is when the rooms are fully occupied. But again, like Brendan said, if the equipment's functioning as designed, the air exchange is proper. Because someone designed that once upon a time to exchange the air with its, you know, 10,000 cubic foot classroom or a 30,000 cubic foot auditorium. The equipment is designed to exchange that air to meet a certain standard. And if it's working, it's meeting that standard.
Thank you, Mike. Joel?
Thank you. So, sort of to that point, I feel like we've been listening to this for like 35 minutes. And I don't know why I should care about most of what we're talking about. Why do I care about the humidity relative to COVID? Why do I care about CO2 relative to COVID? If none of these filters filter out COVID, why do I care when they're being changed, right? Like, air quality issues that persist in these schools are air quality issues that were going to persist regardless of this pandemic or not. Aren't we trying to figure out whether it's safe within the context of this pandemic to put students and teachers back into a building in which there's a very specific, you know, viral component that we're trying to address? If that's the case, I appreciate that air exchange sounds like it's important. But I haven't heard any explanation as to why I care about, you know, does Corona spread better when it's humid or when it's dry? Does Corona spread better when there's more CO2 in the air or when there's less? If not, why are we focusing on any of this? Why don't we just focus on, you know, the rate of exchange of air and the end? Like, what are these filters doing from a Corona's perspective, I guess?
Well, I couldn't, I couldn't agree with you more. And again, going into this whole process, our focus was air exchange. And we've been throwing a few curveballs relative to air quality. And I think it's unfortunate there's some sort of, you know, fear that these schools inherently have bad air quality that we're trying to defend against. I don't think these schools have bad air quality. That's not to say there aren't classrooms that have felt warm before. There aren't classrooms that felt too cold before, too humid before. I'm sure there are. It's the nature of an older system, the nature of living in New England where it's, you know, a month from now, it's very cold in the morning and by 1 o'clock, the classrooms are so hot. The systems can't keep up with that temperature differential. So, there are people who have felt hot or cold in these classrooms. I think air quality is what our primary focus was, and that's why we brought Siemens in, air exchange, making sure that the existing equipment exchanges the amount of cubic feet in that room as designed. And that's been a primary focus all along. Now, does that, even the air exchange, does that prevent transmission of COVID-19? Buildings aren't meant to prevent someone from getting COVID-19. It's personal responsibility, it's hygiene, there's a whole lot of measures in place to help us protect ourselves against COVID-19. Being indoors, I mean, we go to the market, we go to restaurants, we go to the doctor's office. I mean, we're not checking any of these air qualities in these buildings. I mean, relative to whether we decide to win or not, we assume that the mechanical personnel have done so, just as we're doing so here. I think we can make the air exchange in all these district-wide, these classrooms as close to design as we can. And I think that'll be sufficient for proper air exchange in these classrooms. Now, can we get some sort of measure that's off the chart? I don't think so. I think we can have the air exchange to be the standard that these classrooms are designed for.
Thank you, Samantha.
So, I just want to make sure that I understand sort of the spectrum of what's happening. So, every school is getting evaluated, based on the evaluation, improvements are going to be made. Then Siemens is going to optimize and balance the system and then ionization units will go in. Is that my understanding, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, which, it sounds like some schools have been evaluated and we've moved on to improvements. Which schools are we looking at that have been already evaluated?
We're looking at everything right now, again. So, we're not basing it on a previous report. We know some things were deficient from previous reports that haven't been repaired. And those, that's so-called the low-hanging fruit. We know that this air damper has been closed for a reason. We need to replace it right now. So, we have a list of things that we need to fix that we know already. And that's what Siemens is in town doing right now. And at the same time, we're evaluating for other deficiencies that may have been known or not known that still need to be addressed. So, it's a district-wide effort. I can't say we're focusing on one school versus another school. We know that certainly West Parish is the newest of our schools and that probably the least amount of retrofitting. We know that O'Malley, GHS, and West Parish have automated energy management systems that we can get in and take a look at a computer to see how things are functioning, which is a little bit easier. You're doing it from a laptop or a desktop versus going room to room. So, this is a, this is a big effort. And again, I can't specify one school is being done faster than another school. We talked about air quality testing starting tomorrow, starting in the elementary school. Because that's one of the bigger variables with the elementary schools since they don't have energy management systems other than West Parish. So, it's, everything's in play right now. Again, what we're addressing.
Sorry. So, I thought Brendan said that some schools had been evaluated and that this week there were some other schools that they were going to start on. Was that not correct?
We have previous reports from previous projects where there were known deficiencies.
Okay.
Some of those deficiencies aren't, you know, aren't earth-shattering. They just, we need to make a tweak here, tweak there. You know, we know we have had some outside air dampers purposely closed. And that's generally due to the rooms inhabitant not wanting that air damper open because they felt it was too cold. So, again, those things are known. We can't live with that anymore. Someone's going to have to explain to that staff member that wear a sweater. There may be some cool air that blows through this at times. So, we're addressing what we know is deficient and then reevaluating to find further deficiencies.
And so, Siemens is going based on previous evaluations and making those adjustments? Or they're going in and, I guess I'm just trying to understand what is the process? So, Siemens is going into every school and evaluating the entire building? Or are they just going based on what they've already evaluated in previous years? I'm just, I think it would be really helpful for, for everybody to sort of understand what exactly is Siemens doing and how are they doing it and where are we in that process? Because unfortunately for a lot of people, you know, our word is not enough. So, I think knowing exactly what is happening and what the timeframe is, I think is really important moving forward and helping people feel more comfortable going into the building.
I'll try and Brendan explain it differently than I did.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, basically, like Mike said, I mean, we have existing reports from existing, from previous projects and we had the low-hanging fruit. So, we've ordered materials to go out and replace, repair any deficiencies that are known. We have included time to go through each individual unit ventilator in each school to identify inefficiencies in each school. We have a project manager that's assigned to the job. I know he's been working on getting manpower out here. I don't know exactly what his implementation timeframe is, what school they're prioritizing first. I don't know if there is a priority on schools, which one to target first. But I can work with him to try to develop a timeframe potentially. And from that timeframe, timeline, we can give some guidance on what that will look like. I unfortunately don't have that for you at this time, though that's something that we could provide to you here by the end of the week if that's something that you'd be interested in.
So, if you have any questions?
Can I just have a follow-up in relation to that? It's just a clarification question.
Go ahead.
So, just so that we understand, we're making improvements, but we haven't moved on to optimizing or balancing yet. But that is happening after, is that correct?
The steps are to make sure the functions, followed by optimization and balancing. The equipment has to work as designed.
Yeah.
Okay. So, yes, the timeline, I think would be very helpful.
Yeah, I'll add on to that too. I mean, as we're going around doing evaluations, if we find a low-hanging fruit that, hey, we can just repair this right now. We're going around with some material in hand. If it's a low-hanging fruit item, we can repair that as we're doing the evaluation. That will be completed as we do the evaluation as well, so.
Fafia, do you have a question?
No, I don't. If my hand's up, I apologize.
Okay. No, I just, I'm just going, making sure everybody gets a crack at it before we recycle.
No, I actually, I've heard this quite a few times. He was given the explanation. You know what? I have a comment. No matter what he's going to tell us today, no matter what anyone's going to tell us today, nobody can feel 100% safe because, first of all, it's a virus that we have no idea what it is about, okay? We have no idea, you don't know, it's impossible. You can have the best ear, you can have the number 15 quality ear like some schools. You can never say, because we don't know what's going to happen outside of the school. We don't know where a teacher's going to go, we don't know where a student's going to go. We only can know that the best way we can do is to get into the schools what we can, while the air quality can be open or whatever generated. But we have to do, it's the personal hygiene, people. The personal hygiene. Because once we, like I used to say, I bring my daughter, I bring my daughter to the school, I don't know if she's going to walk out the back door. You don't know what a child's going to do, how they're going to interact after schools. You don't know what a parent's going to do and you don't know what a teacher's going to do. We didn't know what's happening all summer long. We have to have faith in the teachers, faith in the parents, faith in the system and ourselves and make sure that what we're doing is okay. And we'll do it step by step. Doesn't mean that it's going to be there forever. It doesn't mean if we don't change, it doesn't mean we can't. Like I always said, we have step one right now is the hybrid. Step two is that if we go all, you know, all remote, then we do what do we do and how do we do that? Because you know what? Right now, we have to figure out, the most complaints I'm getting is not the quality of the air. It's nothing. You know what I'm getting? I'm getting complaints saying that, okay, we know about the air, we know about our schools, we heard all the time. We heard this, oh, my kid's been in there before when it was flu season. They come up with the flu, they come up with all of this because my kid knows how to wash and do this. I'm worried about is I don't even know what I'm going to do on the 16th. There are more complaints on, I don't have my, I don't have my program, I don't have this, more than the quality of the air. So, what we need to do is you sit down and you understand, the new city school committee, thank you, ask your questions, what you need to ask. You know what? I don't know, Laura, if your child was in this school last year, it was flu season. We had, there was, you know, all these different kinds of things that we were doing, all these different kinds of, whatever. It's really what we have to do is make sure, one, our nurses are set up, our home health aides, whoever's going to take the child. Everything's clean, you've got your cleaning facilities in place. You have whatever you need. If you need the plastic, you know, people are sending, do you want, you know, plastic, whatever they're called, separation from the administration or the teachers or the office, whatever. We need to figure that out because I don't care if, who comes in and we're going to fix everything and we're going to do it. We are going to do it because it's good for us anyways. But it still does not prevent whether we have the filter that's 15 or whatever, going to get someone from getting COVID. Because we can keep you safe in this school. Because if you remember, when it was the hottest time, the hottest time of all was in March, when it was like every other person had COVID, everywhere you went. We were in schools. The children were there eight hours. The teacher, there was, oh, someone was exposed to exposed. We didn't even know what tracing was. And yet, we kept it down because why? We said, okay, hygiene, do this, do that, until we stopped the schools. Remember, we didn't stop the schools when everyone else did. And I kept getting all these emails saying, Mayor, we've got to put things in place first. We've got to put things in place. You know what we did it after? And yet, here we are. And that's all I'm saying. You can ask all the questions you want, I'm done.
Well, thank you. Kathy, do you have another question?
Not a question, but a comment.
Well, we have these very valuable people here.
No, but it's very, it's just quick. It's that, you know, Mike's comment of bringing a sweater, we need to make sure we tell parents and families that, and teachers. So, we need to know that to be safe, we have to have, you know, Mike has made a very good point there. Thanks.
Laura?
Thank you. I just want to go back. I really appreciate hearing what the procedure is and what the process is that you're going through, Brendan and Mike and Joe and everyone there. And it makes a lot of sense to be taking this step by step. When, the question though I have is, when can we realistically assume that the implementation, the implementation piece that Brendan, you said, you know, we're, you know, you're sort of working on what we had, information we had earlier and then going into schools and looking at what the needs are? When is that going to be completed? Or when can we estimate that is going to be completed? Because our kids, and I do have children in the elementary schools and one of the older elementary schools, and many people watching this work and have kids in the schools and they're going in, if they're going back Wednesday, so a week from today. And so, the question is, when would we really? And so the question is, when would we realistically assume that, um, these things could be implemented as far as optimizing the air exchange and all that? My understanding is the ionization piece is going to be a little later. But can you give us a realistic timeline for when that can be completed?
Yeah, I would say that, I mean, these schools are safe to occupy at this time. I don't see any concerns why they aren't. There's fresh air being implemented at all times. The only thing that we can do is improve the overall uh, air exchange in these buildings, but they all do have, uh, air exchange currently. Um, as far as the timeframe, as I said, I know the material is on order, but I'll have to talk to, uh, the project manager to find out what that is and I can put that together for you. I myself, I'm out on site right now at the high school, uh, with a couple of contractors going to be walking out some sites and kind of finalizing some, some scopes on their end. So that's what Brad and I are doing at 11 o'clock and I'm actually at the high school right now. Um, it's a, it's a moving, it's, it's always moving, uh, moving target and we're just trying to expedite as much as possible.
I appreciate that Brendan and anything you can give us, you know, would be very helpful, I think, as we move forward. So thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, just to follow up on that, I think it's critical to understand that what we're doing right now isn't all of a sudden making these buildings safe. They are currently safe to occupy. The air exchange is sufficient in these buildings. We're just building off that because the, the new standard is far above what we've been used to for all these years. So let's, let's not assume what we're doing now is making these buildings safer occupancy. They were safer occupancy in March. They were safer occupancy last September. We've gone through with inspectional services again this year to make sure other real safety issues are met, you know, fire alarms, egresses, all that stuff has been addressed for annual building inspections. We can't lose sight of the things that really matter in building safety. Not this fear that someone might get sick from someone next to them and the epipod is going to drag it out, you know? We've gone through very carefully this year and made sure that our building management is up to par. And we've had, Joe, I believe we've done with all inspections. We have our last inspection today with inspectional services in the fire department. So again, that's an annual thing that we do and, um, we're, we're passing with flying colors.
Melissa.
Um, thank you. Um, first I want to say thank you to Safadia for kind of pulling that together of what she said, you know? It's, it's not necessarily the buildings that are going to make this safe, you know? I mean, if, if you really think about that statement, there's a lot to be said about it, you know? Um, and Mike Hale and your team, I mean, I can't thank you for all the work that you're doing. You're going 24/7 on this, which is great. Um, my question was going to be about air exchange, um, but Laura kind of captured most of what I, my concern was. But while Siemens is here, I, I heard him say, and I just want to be very clear. Um, school starts September 16th, next Wednesday, which one kids will be in the building? Do you see any barriers, any reason, um, why kids should not enter the buildings? Is, is there any concerns on your radar right now for teachers to know, for parents to know, for kids to know, for anyone to know, why? Is there any reason why no one should enter the buildings on the 16th? Because it is only a couple of days. We know there's a lot going on. There's questions about our HVAC system because in 2014, reports came out saying that they're old. But based on everything you're doing, have done, doing and going to be doing for the next couple of days, do you see any reason why we can't use our schools to the capacity that we're at or that we intend to for the next uh, couple of months until more components are put in place?
No, again, again, I mean, our 2014 report doesn't really mean much. There's been a lot of improvements made throughout the city, throughout the lifecycle of these buildings. Um, a lot of new technologies been implemented. There's been a lot of repairs that have been made. Um, as far as air quality, I, there's no concerns on our, on our part and I, I feel that the air quality assessment will verify that. Again, I mean, it's more, it's more so a hygiene thing and just ensuring that the people in the space are cleaning their hands, washed, uh, wearing their mask and social distancing as much as possible. Um, as far as an air quality standpoint, there's no concerns on Siemens' part. The only thing that we're going to be doing again is implementing, uh, additional measures to, uh, increase the air exchange in these buildings as well as implementing the ionization to potentially uh, neutralize any pathogens, but that's just something that's going to be performed downstream. So.
Thank you. Uh, Joel.
Yeah, my question doesn't relate to the air, air issues, so I'll hold it until we're done, I suppose. We are going to have other non-air issues, right?
Samantha?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Jonathan, before we go, I'd like to sort of recap and just, um, just, uh, what I heard in terms of what, you know, what else, what we need in terms of some documentation or just information.
Go right ahead.
Okay. So, um, this is, uh, Mike, your team, I think maybe also Brendan, but so I just want to recap some of the things I think will help um, me communicate with both the community, but also our staff. And we've mentioned these things already, but I just want to sort of put a, a fine point on them. So one thing would be the, we would, it'd be helpful to get from your team a, a list of sort of what our staff should do and should not do. Okay. You laid them out here or orally, but I need, I need something that I can just, I can take some bullets and then I can, you know, fashion it into communication. And that might be different at, you know, at the four older elementary schools versus say O'Malley. I know one specific question I need guidance from you on, I mean, our staff does is that a question keeps coming up from our staff is that O'Malley, what do they do about the open windows? So, you know, do they open them or not? Um, and, and if not, just, just why? And so I can explain that to them clearly, but if I could have some do's and don'ts, what to do, what not to do. You know, whether it's at a system, a school that has a, you know, full blown system, like the bigger three or the folks, the unit vents. Um, so that's one piece. That's something you can, you can get to us just so I can make sure folks a clear guidance of what not, what to do, what not to do with the systems, including like, don't touch them, things like that.
We will develop a list. It'll be a living list. I don't think it'll be static because I think there'll be some, as one things were gone, something else may show up that we need to deal with at a later date. So I'll produce something for your review.
Okay, great. And, and if it's living, living, that's great. We can always give people updates. Um, the next thing is just in, you mentioned this in, in passing is, is cleaning protocols. So it'd be helpful for me to be able to communicate what training janitors have done and then what you expect them to do, either our custodians or janitorial services during the day and when people are out of the building. Um, so that would be helpful because people, families, school committee, but also staff just want that comfort of saying, oh, this is what's going to be done and seeing it in, in, you know, lay out in front of them in, in writing. So that'd be helpful. Can, cause that's something you can get to us?
Certainly. We actually, we hired a, a third party vendor to help develop a cleaning protocol that's based off the best practices for COVID. Based on what Bessie and DPH have, have recommended for a cleaning protocol, including any updated SDS sheets for the cleaning chemicals being used, the electrostatic foggers that we purchased to help disinfect the school. So we've implemented a whole lot in the custodial side of this. School department supplementing janitorial services, I believe.
Yep.
Uh, what that list looks like, I think Gary already has something on that. I've seen it. I'll provide what we have.
Right.
Um, and we met with our custodian um, leader today on making sure that that's well understood by all the staff. The staff was trained by the same company um, on, uh, PPE and cleaning protocol, um, and protecting themselves as well as their cleaning to protect others in the school, both learning and working.
Great. That, that would be, that's just the sort of thing I think would be really helpful for us, for our folks to see listed out. They can look at it. They can refer. I think that'll, that'll reassure them. Obviously your folks are doing what, what we need to be done. Uh, they just are, the whole community just needs to see that. So they have that assurance. That'd be very helpful. Um, the other piece here, there are two more pieces. One is just the, the notion that Brendan mentioned. Um, sort of a, an update. It'd be really helpful for us to get, to get like, you know, weekly and that can just be an email, you know, that you send to me that I then, that can, can, you know, refashion and format for folks, which, you know, what's been done this week? What progress has been made? What schools have been tested in terms of their quality? When will the other, others be tested? Some sort of weekly status report on what's been done and um, you know, and, and what still needs to be done, that sort of thing. And/or as Brendan said, timelines on when, you know, for completion. I understand timelines can always change because materials don't come in or supplies. That's okay. But having some sort of weekly update on what's been done and what still needs to be done, I think would be helpful for all of us. That's something that can be done once a week, say?
Yes. That's up to me to do for you.
Great. I would appreciate that a ton. I think, I think the whole community would appreciate that, just that, that, that. And then, and then the last piece is, and this is part of, I think is, uh, I can't remember who said it, which school can remember, but just the, getting us the numbers as, as the air quality testing is coming in. We understand it won't be a written report, but having those numbers, you know, even looking at the numbers from the East Gloucester report from 2017 was very helpful because as you said, seeing those numbers, we can easily see that, you know, they're well within the standard and, and I, I expect they will be. You've said that they will be. But seeing those numbers as they come, I think would be helpful to the committee and the rest of the community.
Understood.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Brendan. Um, and I, and we understand that you have got work to do and we, we're glad you have work to do and, and we want you to go do it. So, uh, Mike, do you have a few more minutes to, uh, to, uh, for us?
I have, yeah. Surprise him to take off. Um, thank, um, so I'm here for you guys. So fire away with additional questions.
Awesome. Thank you guys for your time.
Brendan.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to Joel. I think he had a question that was unrelated to the air quality.
Yeah, my question relates to, um, hand washing and availability of sinks. So, um, Principal Fusco sent out a great video to the veterans, student population. In that video, he's showing them how to wash hands properly. And sure enough, he goes right over to the sink, hits the button and it doesn't work. He hits it again. It doesn't work. He has to hit the hot water button to get some water to come out of the sink. And so I emailed him, but I said, you know, I didn't even notice. I'm just so used to just kind of, you know, I think he's just hitting it until one of these works. And so this year, we're, more, more importantly than ever, hand washing is going to be a, a big component. Um, you know, have you gone through, I know you have the, the, the list when teachers or principals say, hey, something is broken. But as, you know, Principal Fusco kind of highlighted, sometimes you even realize something is broken because it's just been broken for so long. Um, have you had the DPW go through and make sure that sinks throughout the school district are all working and, you know, working properly so that hand washing can be accomplished?
Joel, there's dozens and dozens of sinks that have been decommissioned over the years for obvious reasons. Um, they were once lab sinks or they're in classroom sinks that didn't make sense to operate. Um, some have been shut down because they're on exterior walls and pipes have frozen over the years and they haven't worked. And our life. I don't know if that particular sink has just got a single mixing valve on it. So that's why you hit the hot and it's, it's already pre-mixed. Or it's just a hot. I, I don't know that. You know, our primary focus has been in hand sanitizing stations in accordance with best practices and making sure they're, they're spaced accordingly. Uh, the school department has installed a number of them on their own. We just put in a huge requisition for um, new faucets and flushometers, which are the mechanical piece that flush toilets. Um, so the automatic flushes and then we use metered faucets. You touch it once, it runs, you wash your hands. You don't need to shut, shut, touch it again. It shuts off automatically. You dry your hands, you're on your way. You know, that's well over a hundred thousand dollars, um, district wide on this. And we replace touchless fixtures every time we replace fixtures in the, in the school as it is. It's just you pick a product, you try to start it, you finish it. It's not like we can decommission bathrooms for long periods of time. Uh, we did eight bathrooms at O'Malley this past spring, not anticipating this, but you know, all the fixtures were replaced, toilets, flushometers, sinks, um, faucets and metered faucets. And again, you know, the, the thought process is evolving on this. It's difficult to keep up with. A year ago, they were, they were really suggesting getting away from, um, paper towels in restrooms and going with hand dryers because they're more sanitary. Now some of the thought processes, they're not sanitary because they, they can, they can further contribute to airborne, aerosol, aerosolization of, of, of viruses in the air and blows them around in a small space. It's difficult to keep up with it. So I don't know where we think it's broken. There's not a single broken sink on the, on a work order. I can tell you that. We looked at the work orders today. There's not a single broken sink on there.
So would it make sense for me, Ben, to request his principals to, hey, can you each walk into all of your bathrooms, check all the knobs? If anything's not working, put in a ticket so that Mike Hale knows about it? Would that be helpful to the DPW?
It, it certainly would be helpful. I mean, that's the communication we have with, with the principals. The best principals communicate with us the most frequently and we don't shy away from that. If there's something broken, we want to know about it. I think if you took a look at the, the work order ticketing system, turnaround time is, it's significant. I mean, the past 30 days, we've had 87 new tickets entered, 57 are closed, 14 are pending. And some of those 14 are pending are ones that we have not prioritized as being high. The hanging of a new whiteboard or the moving of a coat hook. Those aren't really ringing my bell right now as being needed to be done right away. They'll get done for sure. Um, and that's just in the last 30 days outside of the request last spring for what needs to get done in these schools before we reopen. Again, that's pre-COVID. So things have changed. The principals were not in these schools frequently until, um, midsummer. So we're going to set to see a ticket upswing in the next two weeks for sure. Happens, opening a school every year. I would not, I'd be very surprised if we had bathrooms that had broken faucets in them that weren't already recognized. I think some of the inside classrooms, um, may have gone to a single mixing valve, whereas you just touch the hot, it's pre-mixed at a certain temperature for you. Be very surprised if it was only hot and no cold.
That's fine. The video was one of the, the main student bathrooms, but.
Okay. But it may be a mixing valve.
Sure.
Melissa.
Thanks. And just a note too, we'll be using a lot of hand sanitizer too, not just hand washing. Cause I, that seems to be one of the new norms. Um, so my question also is related to the ticket system and I have to commend you and Joe for doing extraordinary job on that system because I think there was a time and Kathy and Jonathan can attest and be enough when it was probably eight pages long and we're down to like two and a quarter. Um, with nothing very serious on it. But, um, so I want to talk about windows that don't open because there's been a claim that there's a lot of windows that don't open. So if you go to, I think it's page two, I don't have the report in front of me. Um, there's a request at Plum Cove stating that two windows in a room um, didn't function. I think it's window one and three, but then the comment beside it is that they are now operable. So from your standpoint, my question is, from your standpoint, because, um, you're addressing those windows, are you aware of any other windows that are broken in the district other than needing a screen or needing a handle? And then I have a question about the handles too. Is it those crank handles that you can use from window to window? Move it or are they permanent cranks? Cause I see that there's a lot of cranks that might be needed, um, at Plum Cove. So I guess my question is, are there any broken windows that we don't know about that aren't being addressed? And how soon can we fix the crank and the screen issue, um, to make sure all our windows are operable before we start school? If possible.
They're known, they're on a work order to be done. Um, if they're not, and I would not be surprised if there are windows that have been permanently closed for one reason or another. Um, but that's not to say that there aren't operable windows in that classroom. I would suggest there probably are more operable windows than interoperable windows in the smaller elementary schools. Um, handles go missing. There's no question about that. And now if we don't know they're missing, we don't know they're missing. I think, again, further understand the relationship between public works and the loss of public schools. They're your schools. We are the handyman for you. Um, and we respond to needs that need to be done based on what principals or staff tell us need to be done. Um, we do go through these schools when we can and if, and if we see something broken, we try to address it prior to a ticket even being entered. If they're missing cranks, most likely the standard crank that can be purchased, uh, we probably have a box of them. Uh, we just need to know where they're needed and so we can assess it. And it doesn't take the crank on. We have, we have, we have four maintenance men that walk around these schools on a daily basis and do this work.
About the screens? Cause I know I put in a request at the courthouse, the screens, and they came the next day. So obviously there's an ability to get screens. Would you say that, um, the screen is missing and those windows can be fixed before school starts? Not that you need to have a screen, but it's helpful to have it?
Um, I guess, you know, were there screens in these windows previously? Yes. If there were, yes. If there weren't, maybe a little more difficult. If it's just a broken screen, the frame's still intact. It doesn't take much to rescreen it. But if, again, if I don't know, we don't know and we, is, I think you just have to recognize the population, the facilities division. There is supervisor, carpenter or maintenance personnel, a plumber, an HVAC and electrician. It's, it's not a huge, um, division for a, a district this big. Um, some districts, school districts have that many employees just for the high school. We have that for all school buildings plus city buildings. So more we know, more communication in the building principals, the better we are at assessing and addressing these issues. Again, the work order system, things do not last on there long. If they are on there for a long time, there's a reason. If they are on there for a long time, there's a reason for it, it's an unrealistic expectation, it's not ours to do, or it's just something that requires a much larger capital project than what maintenance could do today.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? You have, Melissa, you're very dark, do you have your hand up?
Oh, sorry, I'm in my office, it's dark. I just wanted to, the superintendent was asking for a to-do and a to-don't list, and it just reminded me of a conversation that was earlier about turtle tanks and plants in a room. Mike, is it your opinion that teachers should have plants in turtle cages or whatever they're in, in their rooms during COVID while we're trying to monitor the air? Is that an issue? I know it's probably a silly question, but just wondering how to keep the air the best going forward this year, and there's a lot of little critters in the building, I'm wondering if that would be on a to-do or a to-don't list.
There's a lot that goes on in the public schools that's on your to-do, not-to-do list already. Having, you know, bringing in soft furnishings from home, rugs from home, terrariums, fish tanks, turtle tanks, I mean, all those things read some form of mold at some point. We had one case of mold years ago in East Gloucester School. It was a rug, this one brought from home, tested every room in that school, it was a source for the rug that was brought from home. It wasn't dangerous, but it made someone congested. And again, that's, I think we've all experienced that, you walk in someone's home that may be a little musty, the basement's wet, and you feel that little bit of congestion, it's more harmful to some than others, some may never feel it. I think plants, you're watering plants, water spills off the plants, the soil can get moldy if you water too, too frequently. Changing the water in a turtle tank or a fish tank, that water gets splashed around, it's, it's not a clean environment to have that. Again, it's, it's a difficult give and take, because most of these are elementary schools, and the kids want this stuff, and the teachers appreciate having some green in their classrooms. We've put up with it for the most part, and not really pushed it too much, but when they're on a unit event, and you have wind blowing from this unit event across a wet dish of turtles, what's becoming airborne? Whatever's in that tank. So I'd probably say it's not wise to do, it's like eating in a classroom, it's against our pest, your pest management program to eat in classrooms, because kids drop crumbs, staff drop crumbs. What likes crumbs? Ants and mice. So ants and mice aren't in these classrooms at the start of school that are in there because of the food source for them. So again, we do a lot of things we shouldn't do, probably should tighten up on some of that, but that's, again, that's really in Ben's corner to decide whether he wants to implement that or not, we deal with it, but again, there's consequences to allowing certain behavior in classrooms.
Thank you, I'm laughing that we're actually talking about turtles during COVID, but I just want to say thank you, trying to, just trying to put this all together, and do's and don'ts, and what we can do to keep our kids and our staff safe in school, and the little things you don't think about sometimes cause issues, so thank you for that.
And don't bring in household cleaning chemicals, that's something that probably should be on the to-not-to-do list immediately. Do not bring stuff in from home to clean your classroom. We have to have safety data sheet to everything that's used in that classroom or that school to ensure that if someone comes in contact with it, we know what the substance was. Super important. And I just can see this beginning of school, you know, a big rush to BJ's to buy Clorox wipes and spray bleach that we might not know what it is, it's in a bottle that looks like our bottles are providing, and someone ingests that, inhales it, we don't know what it is, EMTs don't know how to respond to it, Bertinson does not how to respond to it. We have a pretty sophisticated SDS program where we have all of our cleaning chemicals listed, and we can just click on a button and send the ER what that kid ingested or it was, came in contact with, if we know what it is. If someone brings them from home, we don't know what it is, ERs are pretty good, but it's just, it's time is, time is of the essence when someone's rushed into Bertinson's room.
Mike, just on that to follow up, can you just explain to folks who are listening, and the school committee as well, what you've told us about the solution that DPW's providing for, you know, for cleaning desks and that sort of thing, and how it, you know, how it complies with the, and how, I mean, how it's, how it's safe and how it can be used?
So in order to provide every classroom with something that's, we know what it is, effective, again, we're cleaning the schools, and you have supplemental janitorial services, but the need to clean a desk or wipe a surface down that someone, a teacher feels is necessary at the time, we're providing each classroom with a refillable hand-trigged squirt bottle that's filled up with water from the sink, bathroom, or classroom sink, and we have a cleaning solution that comes in a tablet form, so it's safe to handle, it's not liquid, you're not going to pour liquid into a container, it's a lot of funnel in a classroom, you just drop the tablet in the top of the dispenser, fill it with water, it dissolves, now you have a solution that is a disinfectant that can help clean flat surfaces. And again, there's a difference between cleaning and disinfecting, I think that's something that's not well-known outside the custodial arts. You know, you clean to get the dirt off, you disinfect to get any germs away, so there's a little bit of a difference. So this will be a disinfectant that can also clean, but again, cleaning requires contact time, you spray a desk, you wipe it immediately, all you've done is cleaned it, let it sit there for, for whatever time is predicated based on the cleaning solution, then it disinfects. So we're providing that to every classroom, paper towels, we have a huge stock of these cleaning tablets, so as, as they need them, they'll be given them to use, and we have SDS sheets for them, so if anyone comes in contact with the skin, their eyes, they breathe it in or they ingest it, we can provide a SDS sheet to the school nurse and/or EMTs.
Thank you.
Sephania?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Okay, this is where we all got to work together. This is it, because I can imagine the teachers who are listening saying, okay, yeah, y'all going to supply, you know how many times they had to bring things from home, toilet paper, tissue paper, this, and parents are bringing this? This is the time that we need to stick together and stay together, because this is the only reason why some people, the trust goes away, because we promised these things, we're going to get them these things, and then, you know what, it's great for the first two weeks, and then whatever. We need to come down with a supply list. Each teacher needs to go, like, when they're three fourths down, make sure the principal knows they need this, or the paper towel, whatever, so we can do the supply and demand. Because when the supply's not there, I'm, if I was a teacher, I'd bring it home, too, something's better than nothing. And so that's why we need to work together, we need to make sure that these teachers have what they want in their classrooms. You know, we need to make sure that when they say, yes, my window's stuck, someone needs to be there, we need to make sure that's happening, because if we do that, then we're keeping each other safer, and the trust between the schools and the city and everything else will work better. It's, you know what, we always say to them, we're going to supply, 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 and by the time we're there, we have teachers buying things that, you know, you're right, they shouldn't be, but unfortunately, someone has to bring them in. So we need to really work together and set up a plan that when these teachers are going low, we need to get the supply to them, and if we can't, then we need to find it, and we have to work together to do that. I don't care what, where we're going to get it, whatever, but Mike will order extra, and he needs to know, but he can't know the day that it's gone. So we need to set up something where these teachers immediately tell the principal, they can do it, and we have it done for them, because that's the crucial thing, is the supplies in their, in their rooms. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no questions, I'd like to thank Mike and Joe, and, and this has been very informative, we've got a lot of work ahead of us, and, but we certainly appreciate everything that DPW is doing to try to make the schools safe and secure for our students and teachers, and I can't thank you enough, and you're doing a great job, and just keep up the good work, thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved. Second. Thank you, Mike and Joe.
Thank you, Mike and Joe.
Joe.
Maria, roll call vote.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
You're taken. You're taken?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Thank you for losing everyone.
Ms. Wiesen?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Favaza?
Yes.
And Chairman Pope?
Yes, this meeting is adjourned, we'll see you all in a few hours, thank you very much.